Go ahead and call the April 18th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ahern.
Here.
Bathke.
Here.
Janiezer.
Here.
Heisler.
Here.
Have to keep going. Staber. Vincent. Willer.
Great, thank you. Item two, approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
Motion by Heisler.
I'll second.
Second by Ahern. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's approved. So we'll go to item number three, Water Tower Place Preliminary Site Plan. We'll start with a staff presentation by Ryan.
Got the slide advanced or so probably works to get up a lot during this anyway. Just, I know it's a long agenda, so I'm going to be brief on some of these. Some I'll spend a little bit more time on. Just like to reiterate that a lot of times when we, what you see before you has been something that's been in work for several months, sometimes years. But what gets to you is ultimately, so just a friendly reminder about that. There we go. Okay, so this is a request for Water Tower Place. This is over by the water tower, just on the west side of Kansas. Just south of Penn, West Lake Road specifically, and just up of the water tower. And so this would be a portion of that overall development. It was about 40 acres. Zoning right now is RM12, which is for multi-family. Long-range plan, which recently adopted, is urban high intensity. So that does support that type of use. Here's the preliminary site plan. So this would be one phase of that development. We are reviewing right now the construction plans for the subdivision improvements. So there are some public roads that would come through to the north and south. And this is how that first phase of development would be. Believe there's 44 units. They'd be townhomes, and this is just one example of type townhome that you would see out there. We do have a couple of findings that they would be consistent with RM12. The use and the comprehensive plan and the site plan achieves consistency with the regulations we have pertaining to site plans and design review. So staff does recommend approval, accept those two findings and recommend approval of the preliminary site plan for the 44 townhome house units. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have an applicant presentation on Water Tower Place? Thank you. Please go ahead to the podium and introduce yourself.
I'm Jeff Mekada with Donovan Holdings, and we do not have a presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you if you want to hold. Any public comments on item number one, Water Tower Place? If no, I'll open it to questions and comments from the panel for either the applicant or city staff. I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Straightforward use, attractive elevations.
Okay. Don't appear to have any questions, so thank you. I'll entertain a motion. It looks like we have a sample on page eight.
I move that the planning commission accept the two listed findings and forward the preliminary site plan to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Janiezer.
I'll second.
Second by Ahern. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Janiezer.
Aye.
Heisler.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item number four, Solomon's Entertainment District Preliminary Site Plan. Staff presentation.
Okay, so this is a preliminary site plan for two commercial buildings, north side of Penn Street, just west of the newly constructed Jones Boulevard. Current zoning C2A, again, comprehensive planned, land use map, urban high intensity, C2 and the use conformed to the comp plan. This is one of those that I'll refer to, that there's been a lot of back and forth with the developer. And I just, these are big buildings. And so a lot of times, from my perspective, what you're really trying to be cognizant of is the mass and the scale of these types of buildings. I mean, they're in the range of, you know, 30,000 square feet. And just to give you some context, I think the the new brewery is about, I think it's like 23,000. So it's a, it's a big building. And so you kind of are concerned about these mass expanses of flat building walls. So I, it's been a lot of back and forth. We're really pleased with the progress that we've made in the current design. Put up a few of the design, the building in the foreground is, would be the Pizza Ranch and the bowling alley. And the background would be the recreational facility, youth sports complex. This is the Pizza Ranch and Bowling Alley. Again, these are day and nighttime views. Again, just, just kind of pushing to get some visual interest. It's on a primary corridor, and so you really want people coming in and having an impact on what that looks like. And I think they've done a pretty good job. The Pizza Ranch kind of steps out a little bit to kind of break up that facade, and they've done a lot of good with vertical, just to, again, to break up that mass. And here's the youth sports complex, again, just kind of playing with kind of those planes and projections and things like that. Again, another big building, but I think they've done a pretty good job. And again, I think our masonry requirements will make this look really nice. This is kind of looking northwest at the building, kind of if you're looking from Penn. So again, we're very pleased. A lot of attention to pedestrian connections, so obviously people drive a lot, and that's fine, but also pedestrian connections from public sidewalks to each building and to get, and as I understand, I think your child could be playing sports over there, and you could go to Pizza Ranch and have pizza or something like that and walk back and forth, which is, which is really nice. So we do have two findings. Again, the use is consistent with C2A zoning, and the site plan achieves consistency with site plan ordinance and design standards. So staff does recommend you accept those two listed findings and recommend city council the preliminary site plan for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have an applicant presentation for the Solomon's Entertainment District Preliminary Plat?
Hello, my name's Brandon Pratt. I don't have a presentation, but I think Ryan did a pretty good job going over what we were talking about, just a couple highlights that I'm very proud of. We really focused on connectivity, as Ryan mentioned, too, not only the walking trails, but inner, between the two buildings. So we do anticipate quite a bit of foot traffic. So we did spend a lot of time going back and forth on the building and very proud of where we ended up. It's going to be a highlight, I think, for North Liberty and certainly for the Penn Street corridor. So more than anything, I'm just here for any questions.
Great, thank you. And do we have any public comments on item number four? If no public comments, I'll open it to questions and comments from the commission. I'm happy to see this come in front of us.
Yes.
We've been talking about it, hearing about it for a while.
Yeah. The renderings are the icing on the cake.
Yeah, the diversity and the facade, other than, I was thinking it was going to be these huge warehouse-looking things, so that is nice to see.
That's, to be honest, one of the biggest challenges that we had, and the biggest thing that we think we challenged Brandon and his team was, is it cannot look like a big, big box.
Ryan and his team is definitely protecting the beauty of Penn Street, so we spent a lot of time making sure it looks good. Thank you.
And logistically, this will abut the residential neighborhood right behind it?
So yeah, we've got apartments to the north. We do have a street that divides it, so that along the north side there is Hayes Lane. So that is constructed currently. I know they're working on the traffic signalization to the west, but that'll, that'll provide a good kind of break between those uses and then the lower-density residential developments to the north of that.
We always talk about parking, and I know you were following the ordinance, making sure requirement, but on the rec facility like this, is this like two baseball teams in there that we'd think about that much parking, or what kind of?
Well, this was, you might recall that I adjusted some of the parking standards that we have in the city. This is one that I really held the line to, just because I've had kids that went to these sports, and parking is always tough to find.
Exactly.
So it was for both uses, one parking space per 200 square feet, which is really on the higher end, and I feel like that's appropriate. So it's not something that was so lean that I felt like it's, we're going to have a problem here. We really required code-wise, a lot of parking here, which I think is going to be necessary. I think these are going to be very popular, so.
And Brandon, you obviously had to implement that, but we appreciate that because that is exactly what I was worried about with the residential streets right behind it, trying to get people to park on the streets.
The civil team did a good job working with the city. We had to expand, I think, our site plan two or three times, but we, we got it figured out. And hopefully we are busy. That's the goal.
Right? Wonderful problem to have. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion. We have a sample motion in the packet.
I'll move that the planning commission accept the two listed findings and forward the preliminary site plan to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Heisler.
I'll second.
Second by Ahern. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Heisler.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Janiezer.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving swiftly, item number five, the Steinler Orthopedic Clinical Preliminary Plat. And the next item we'll talk about separately, the site plan, two different items.
Yeah, lots, lots going on. That's a good thing. So this is a two-part request, and I'll kind of cover these in two. We have a first, a preliminary plat for a two-lot subdivision, one of which the Steinler Orthopedic Facility will be located on, and another much larger piece. But current zoning is C3. It was recently zoned to the C3 higher-intensity commercial use. Again, the long-range plan is urban high intensity, so the zoning and the use conformed to the long-range plan for the city. Lot one, B8.93 acres, and we'll get into those details a little bit more, but lot two is 27.29 acres, so a lot more area for compatible development, we'll see. So it's a pretty straightforward request. Preliminary plat proposes commercial development consistent with the comp plan, and the preliminary plat achieves consistency with our subdivision ordinance. So staff recommends you accept those two listed findings and forward the request to city council with a recommendation for approval.
And this is the one that had the Good Neighbor Meeting and no objections?
Correct. Thank you. Yep. And that, we did that with, associated with the rezoning. So just a couple people attended and just had general questions. Thank you for that reminder.
And do we have an applicant presentation for the Steinler Orthopedic Preliminary Site Plan?
Hi, I'm Will Downing with RDG, Planning and Design, with the architects and civil engineers for the project. We don't have a further presentation, but we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on item number six? If no, I'll open it to questions and comments from the commission on the preliminary site plan for either the applicant's engineer or the, or designer or city staff. I don't have any.
Straightforward. Pretty facility. It was actually recently to get my shoulder looked at, so I saw their old facility recently, so. Big building.
Okay. No questions on the preliminary plat, then I'll entertain a motion. I think that's on page 45, for sample.
I move that the planning commission accept the two listed findings and forward the preliminary subdivision plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Janiezer.
I'll second.
Second by Ahern. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Janiezer.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Heisler.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
So we'll move on to item number six, which is the Steinler Orthopedic Preliminary Site Plan. Previous was the preliminary plat, excuse me. I may have misspoken.
Excuse any typos that are in there. It was quite the packet. So yes, this is the preliminary site plan for the Steinler Orthopedic Facility. This is just shy of 83,000 square foot building, so it's quite large and much larger than the current facility, and I think that was one of the reasons for looking at North Liberty, or just quite, they were just out of space. And so we are certainly happy to have them. We've been talking about it for quite some time. Again, zoning C3, higher-intensity commercial with the UHI long-range plan. Just here's how the facility lays out. It's at the south end of the property with one access point. Again, we worked with them just to make sure it meets all site plan requirements. Just some renderings of what the facility would look like are up there. So again, findings, the commercial use of the property is consistent with the C3 district, which is a medical office and long-range plan. And it meets, it is consistent with site plan requirements and design standards, so staff does recommend you accept those listed findings and forward the request to city council with a recommendation for approval. And if you notice, we've been working with Will, with RDG for quite some time, and you may recall, RDG did our comprehensive plan, so they are, they're kind of expanding and have more of a local presence now. So still excited to work with different team members, but still with RDG. Thank you.
Any applicant presentation?
No further presentation, just again, available for questions.
Great, thank you. Any public comments on item number six? If none, then questions and comments to the commission? I still noticed in the design elements, the varying heights and depth.
Yeah, this is, I mean, the other ones were in the neighborhood of 30,000, so this is 80,000, so very large. And I think it's exciting for the northern parcel, too, of what kind of compatible development that'll come along. So just, you know, Kansas is really an emerging corridor. You see two developments on there in front of you today, so in five, 10 years, it's going to look a lot different.
Do we anticipate additional traffic signals at Kansas and Forever Green?
It's in our CIP for signalization, so yes.
Okay.
So we plan to have signals at Kansas and Forever Green and Jones Boulevard permanent as well.
Both of those are slated for fiscal year '24, which
Twenty-four, okay.
The next fiscal year.
Not too far away, though, yeah. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for item number six, the preliminary site plan.
I'll move that the planning commission accept the two listed findings and forward the preliminary site plan to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Heisler.
I'll second.
Second by Ahern. Can I have another roll call vote, please?
Heisler.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Janiezer.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Now we're on to item number seven, public hearing on the zoning map amendment. The staff presentation.
Okay, so this is a request of Modern Horizons for zoning map amendment on 9.3, 9.83 acres. The rezoning is then affectionately known as Fox Run Farm. The rezoning would be from ID interim development to RS4 PAD. For purpose of the development proposal is age-restricted community, 55-plus, with a grouping of single-family residences in a clubhouse common area on one lot. And it is on the east side of Scales Ben Road, approximately 170 feet south of Fox Run Drive. Property is currently designated, zoning right now, as I mentioned, is ID. So this kind of, the map, the upper map shows the zoning map currently zoned ID, surrounded by RS4 zoning, just to the south is small park, which is owned by the city, and that's zone public. And the future land use map designation is urban low intensity, and I've just provided the description on here as well as in your packet, and just highlighted a couple of sections for residential, emphasis on single-family detached and attached residential dwellings. Attached dwellings be a transition between arterial and collector streets. And then general aggregate development density, three to eight units per acre. Lot sizes can vary within the development to provide different housing types. So I think we encourage a variety of housing types in the city. I think there's many examples of that throughout the city. I think what was, we really looked at here was really what the actual proposed density of the development was, to be compatible with that surrounding area. So it is a PAD. PADs require preliminary site plan, similar to the ones that you've already seen, that you've seen previously, but this is tied to the zoning. So the development generally needs to be consistent with the, assuming it gets approved, with the preliminary site plan. There are some flexibilities from my perspective, like setbacks can decrease by like 10% or something like that if it goes beyond what we call minor variations or minor deviations, and it has to come back through the rezoning process and we start right back over. So currently depicted 34 single-family residences. They look like long, big boxes because those are kind of building envelopes, and we've encouraged them to do that, similar to vintage estates. It's just the maximum extent to which they could develop, and that helps from a setback standpoint of what the setbacks would be to property lines. Generally speaking, about 10-foot separation distance between each other. I do know that that's different from the built environment surrounding. A lot of single-family homes on individual lots with larger setbacks, so this is a different type of housing type. Certainly, we recognize that. Current proposed density is 3.45 units per acre before right-of-way dedication, 3.59 units per acre after right-of-way dedication. So there is a small portion of Scales Ben Boulevard, Scales Ben Road. I'm sorry that we would expect for a right-of-way dedication. They're proposing that in their plan, and we appreciate that. Certainly, this could be compared to vintage estates on South Jones Boulevard, which is just about built out. That was 30 units on 8.42 acres, and that's 3.56, so very close, has a clubhouse, almost very, very similar in development. Never quite got to you, but there was a previous request. We did go through a Good Neighbor Meeting. That proposal was 22 duplex units in 11 buildings, so, and then a four-story, 48-unit independent living facility. We did have a fair amount of objections for that, which is not surprising, but it never really got to a point where it was presented to this commission. We did enact that moratorium. It was, was brought into that, subject to that moratorium, and it, for good reason. I mean, we wanted to take a step back, see what the, ultimately, the comprehensive plan adopted was going to be. And then subsequent to that, the applicants took that information, I believe, took feedback from the neighborhood and presented the current request. We did have a Good Neighbor Meeting, a virtual one, March 21st, so it was very well-attended. Approximately 60 people. Sometimes it was hard to remember exactly how many people because a lot of people were coming in and leaving, but I thought it was a good discussion. There are a couple of letters in favor, and there are several letters objecting to the request, and those are included in your packet.
Yeah, just to confirm, I see around 18 or more letters, some in favor and some objecting in our packet already.
Yeah, there's about, there's about three in favor, and then the rest would be objecting. Some of them are duplicative, like follow-up emails, so I just included them all together. Some of the concerns that I've heard expressed, and I may have missed a couple, but development isn't compatible with the surrounding area, or it's too dense, increased traffic, value of homes decreasing, water runoff and retention concerns, removal of a historical home, removal of the Farmstead Barn, quality and quantity of homes proposed being built, lack of privacy, buffering, and the city, the possibility of the city acquiring it for a city park. Let's kind of want to go a little bit further into the approval standards and kind of what you judge rezonings on. That's contained in 16509, and I'll kind of go through each one of these. There's about five of them, but these are what really we look at as a staff and ask you to look at when you're considering whether to recommend approval or denial. Consistency of the proposed amendment with the comprehensive plan and adopted land use policies. Again, just adopted a new comprehensive plan. Those areas in green going up and down is the urban low intensity, and this, and the one going left to right is low-density residential. We would certainly consider this a low-density residential. Falls in the lower end of that range of density, the upper range being that eight, so it falls kind of in that lower range. So staff does believe it's consistent. Kind of also took some text from the comprehensive plan, promoted diversity of housing options for all stages and abilities. Let's see. Encourage a variety of dwelling types, styles, houses, price points, satisfy needs, desires, incomes, regulate transition of site intensity rather than types of, type of use to grow neighborhoods. And again, plan for tomorrow as well. So we do believe it meets long-range plan as well as our policies. Number two is the compatibility of the zoning surrounding properties, and three is the compatibility with the established neighborhood character. This development was excluded from the surrounding development. You can't tie it into the adjacent neighborhoods. It's just, it's just not going to happen, and that, that was purposeful. Now, they did stub out some utilities in anticipation that this property would be developed one day. Scales Ben Road is a collector street. It's our opinion that it acts as an edge. I know you have Fox Run on one side of Scales Ben and Fox Run on the other, but this property, and there's agricultural property to the south, that's kind of on Dubuque Street. Those are the only two properties that actually have direct access to Scales Ben Road in the city of North Liberty. And so it kind of acts as, as a neighborhood edge, and I kind of think it's similar to kind of Front Street, right? You wouldn't think of those properties across the street as being in the name, same neighborhood. Now. Now, it is a residential area. There's no doubt about it in my mind. But I do think Scales Ben Road is used much more frequently. So a higher traffic road, it is collector street. So it kind of acts as that edge where I think slightly higher density development would be appropriate. Again, not to the order of eight, 10, 12 units to the acre, but a little bit of variety of a housing type. And again, just to reiterate, proposed development is less than four units to the acre. Kind of looked at, you know, some of the concerns of the residents, just the development in the area. So I kind of looked at the different parts of Fox Run, part four, five, six, I'm sorry, five, seven, nine, and 13. You know, they range from on the low end, 1.875 units to the acre, to the high end, 2.92 units to the acre. Slightly less than what the proposed development is. But, you know, I, I think we're splitting hairs a little bit by saying this development is under four units to the acre is too dense. It'd be similar to saying, you know, Fox Run Part Four with 2.9, two units to the acre is out of character with the area because another part is 1.73 acres. Again, these are just, I think, splitting hairs essentially. Number four, the extent to which proposed development promotes, promotes public health, safety, and welfare of the city as a whole. Again, I've been here for a little over three years. I've had some entertaining requests for, for possibility for this use. I think most of them have been driven on the price point of the land costs and demolition costs. Some of those have been contractor businesses, youth athletic fields. A lot of them is surrounded, you know, could it be agricultural experience? Can we keep the barn and do so? I haven't felt comfortable with a lot of the requests that have been, and again, these are just kind of phone calls that you get about, you know, we would like to do this. Now those didn't progress. I have received phone calls, too, about, you know, could we do a public street and develop it conventionally? I've just never had anybody follow up, and I presume just because it could make it, could make it work financially. The last one is the suitability of the property for the purpose of which it is zoned, meaning is it feasible to develop in its current state? The ID district is a holding pattern, usually for larger agricultural uses, and we're waiting for it to develop. And so we don't really look at ID as being something that's retain that zoning suitable. But ID allows for one acre lots. You could have, you know, a couple, I guess, eight one acre lots. But those would be larger than the other lots in the area as well. The other section we look at, 16505, is the preliminary site plan. Again, we've, we've looked at this, provided comments, got amended plans, so we do feel it meets the preliminary site plan requirements. Some of the other things that I've, I've heard, increased traffic in the area. We were able to take this data when we did the Solomon's Landing. They were looking at some senior housing. Normal traffic for if you were a single family residential is 9.55 per residential unit. That's number of traffic trips spread out through the entire day. This with being a senior living facility averages about 4.31, which would increase, again, throughout the day, an additional 146.54 car trips a day. In the world of, of traffic analysis, we call that a de minimis impact. It is, there is sufficient capacity on Scales Ben Road to be able to handle that, that additional traffic. And even if it were conventional, single family, a little bit higher rate, still would be able to. We've heard a lot about stormwater impacts, and, and those are legitimate concerns. We remind you that this is a zoning stage and a preliminary site plan. And so they show you general locations of where these features are going to go. City engineer is going to have to look at this to ensure that the property meets stormwater ordinance requirements. So this is kind of the earlier step in the process. If this were to be approved, they can go to the next step, which is to spend a lot more money on engineering to demonstrate to the, to the city that they meet all of our ordinances. And it may be that they don't get all the units. The one area of the site plan, they can decrease density. And so if it comes out that they need to decrease the number of units because they need to meet our ordinance, that's just how these things go. We've also heard a lot about it, you know, potential about being a city park. With it being under 10 acres, it's not large enough to be a regional park. We don't identify this, this specific area as, as a needs area for our park. Currently, we're working on acquiring a 40-acre parcel along the new section of Jones Boulevard for a regional park. And that would, there is a need on the north side of North Liberty for sure. We are looking for that 40-acre park to serve the needs of, of the north-end residents. Moreover, we've, we've, city has made a substantial investment in the Ranshaw House. And so, you know, that comes along that with the programming, the cost of maintenance and things like that. It's my understanding right now, there's, there's no indication to acquire that for a city park and to take on that additional programming and maintenance and things like that. Okay, so there are two findings. It is staff's recommendation that they meet Section 16509 of the zoning code for the approval standards. And the preliminary site plan meets the preliminary site plan ordinance section. And so we do feel that it is warranted for approval. So staff recommends planning commission accept those two listed findings and forward the request for zoning map amendment to the City Council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
And do we have an applicant presentation for the zoning map amendment?
Corey Hodapp, developer. I don't have a presentation any better than what Ryan just did. He's pretty well summed it up, did a great job. We worked together, and I want to thank him for doing that. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have on the site. We feel that we spent a lot of time working with the neighbors, going through the process, and here we are. So if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. And next, I'll open it for public comments. One thing I wanted to point out is that we do have, like I said, I was counting over 18 letters. If you have submitted an email, we have that in our packet. And as required, we review our packet before the meeting. So if you do have anything additional, we want to welcome you to come to the podium, introduce yourselves, and then we'll hear public comments.
All right. Good evening, folks. My name is John Loman. I live at 562 Fox Run Drive. My wife, Aspen, and I, and our family have lived in this home for 20 years, and we have lived in North Liberty for about 25 years. We also run a business at 2345 Landon Road. I am here today to express our concerns and objections to the Fox Run rezoning request and development proposal. I'd like to give you a little bit background on the property and then detail my concerns. As you may know, this property, this farmstead, was formerly owned by the Claire Mecada family. Claire, as you probably know, was the former mayor of, of North Liberty. Claire and I talked about this property many times over the years. I believe that he inherited this property from a relative who had it in their will that it would never be developed. And my family and many neighbors bought our homes in the neighborhood with this understanding. I'm not clear on the circumstances, but I believe that somehow Solon State Bank got the farmstead from Claire and now owns the property. And I believe that Solon State Bank has the property contracted with this developer, who wants to raise the buildings and many of the trees to shoehorn in an incompatible 55-plus community. To be clear, I don't begrudge the bank for wanting to make money on this property. And I don't begrudge the developer for trying to maximize the profitability on this development. But if you allow this to proceed, then I believe that it will destroy the character of our neighborhood. The neighbors and I shouldn't settle for something that just doesn't fit into the character of the neighborhood. If a developer wanted to simply build single family homes in a conventional manner, which is what our neighborhood is all about, then I would be disappointed that the 100-year-old farmhouse, believed to be one of the oldest structures in North Liberty, and the beautiful barns would be torn down. But I would have little formal objection. But that's not what's happening with this development. These are not single family homes. They are single units. The developer is attempting to shoehorn in a 55-plus development that could fit into any number of land areas around the community, but is dead set at trying to put it here, even with the objections of many neighbors. So as you know from Ryan, that a good number of adjacent landowners, including us, have formally objected to this rezoning and development. I also believe that the landowner, not necessarily the developer, has purposefully neglected the property so that neighbors will just want it gone. But while we are disappointed that it has been and continues to be neglected, we remain opposed to any rezoning or development that will markedly change the character and safety of the neighborhood. So I also reviewed part of the city's comprehensive plan online. And as it states, it says, "The plan serves as a guide for city staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the City Council, and other city boards and commissions as they set policy, make public investments, and deliberate land use decisions." Under visions and goals on page 34, it lists several goals and guiding principles. The number four guiding principle states, "To reinforce, maintain, and upgrade the character of individual residential neighborhoods." So let me repeat that. The number four guiding principle states, "To reinforce, maintain, and upgrade the character of individual residential neighborhoods." In a nutshell, that is what we are asking you to do with the denial of this rezoning request and development proposal. If you approve it, then you will be going against this very guiding principle. I respectfully ask that you vote down this rezoning request in the development proposal. I'll simply conclude by saying that we think the Fox Run neighborhood is the best neighborhood in America, and you'll help preserve that by voting this down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Any other public comments? Please come to the podium.
Hello, I'm Sloan Tyler. I live at 45 Vixen Lane. And I guess I would just maybe want to speak to just the integrity of rezoning. I don't know anything about rezoning. This is my first experience with it. So when I read the materials that Ryan sent, I just, I had some questions about what, what wouldn't fit. You know, one of his bullets was, you know, does it fit the neighborhood? And he wrote, yes, it does fit the neighborhood. Well, I mean, objectively, it does not fit the neighborhood. You don't see 55-plus communities in residential neighborhoods. That's just not how our community is built. But he said that, yes, it does fit. And then there was another comment about, does it benefit the residents of North Liberty? I mean, we're all here. We say we don't want it. It doesn't benefit us for all the reasons that he listed. And he did do a nice job of listing our concerns. So just my question was, if, if people want to rezone, and it's just, no matter what it is, we say it fits and it works, then what is your role? And so I guess that would be my question, just, it, it really objectively does not fit our neighborhood. And if the, the city is saying, well, yes, it does, well, like, what doesn't fit? What, what would you object to? Hopefully, you've been to our neighborhood. I know you read the packet. 150 extra car trips a week in our neighborhood would be very significant. The traffic concern is real. The drainage is real. This project is the length of this room from my house. If that was your backyard, I, I think you would be where we are. It's, it doesn't fit our neighborhood. Like I said, hopefully, you've been there. You've seen our neighborhood. So I guess I'm just here to reiterate my objection that's already in the packet and maybe ask a question about the rezoning. It, it just, it didn't seem very intellectually honest to just answer yes to every question when it, that's not how neighborhoods are typically put together. Thank you.
Thank you, Sloan.
Hi, my name is Chad Meacham. I live at 1570 Otter Lane. My backyard is directly across the driveway of the lot in discussion. So I've lived at that location for 14 years. I do have a young family that's attending elementary school at Grant's. So we do have several years of trafficking our kids to, to school through, you know, through and by that area. Everything really has been laid out well in regards to those in opposition for the same reasons. It just is not consistent. When I moved there 14 years ago, I moved there because of the neighborhood was the way it was, and this would, you know, change it. And outside of my back window, I'm going to look at something completely different than what I bought that home for 14 years ago. So for me, it's personal because I'm going to look at it every day. I wake, wake up and walk out into my living room. And that, for me, is, is personal. So I do think there are other places for any, you know, development like this. I, I don't mind. I've seen a lot of development in our neighborhood over the last 14 years. I welcome that. If this was developed in a similar format as, as the rest of the neighborhood, I would welcome that as well. But it's, it's just not. And so this is personal for me, and I hope that you decide to, you know, make the decision to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Hi, my name is Angie Maddox. I live at 482 Fox Run Drive, two houses down from John. I wasn't planning on staying, so anything, apologize if I trip over my tongue. I also concur with everything that's been said. I have a teenager now, but my nieces, I watch during the day. And I really enjoy Fox Run because it's a family-oriented neighborhood. And everyone that I've spoken to enjoys the walks that we have, the children in the neighborhood. I'm really looking forward to the development of the park in our neighborhood. I feel like it's one of the oldest parks, and it's pretty poorly maintained currently. And the farm is becoming an eyesore, but I, I don't want to see it developed into anything that's not family-focused. My backyard will also face this development. And I just, the thought of walking by a retirement facility or older facility while I go to the park with young children just seems odd to me. And it does not fit in with anything that we currently have. I'm also concerned with the traffic. As it is, we've already requested several times to have that, the speed reduced, and that hasn't happened. But it is very difficult for me to just cross Fox Run with a dog that's very fast-moving as it is. And I push a child in a stroller. Also, we do get a lot of traffic with campers and boats, and we get lots of motorcycles. And the thought of them driving by a 55-plus community just seems odd to me. And so I think everything else has been laid out. That's all I have to say. So thanks.
Hi, I'm Lovey Anderson, and we live at 35 Vixen Lane, and this is directly behind us. And we already have water problems in our backyard when it rains. And our house is, the tiling all the way around our house goes out into that ground. And that's a big concern to us. But the traffic, you know, we feel like there's going to be way too much traffic. And I also feel like having that many units, when we look out the back, it's going to look like a military base or something like that. And we've been here almost 19 years, and we bought the house because of that. We grew up on farms, so we enjoy the barn. And just don't feel like it fits our property. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lovey. Any other public comments? Sure.
Hi, Monica Brackway. I live at 1520 Otter Lane. This proposed development would, is, resides across the street from, in the back of our property. So I also would wake up every So I also would wake up every morning and, and look at traffic and structures and things that do fundamentally change the integrity of our neighborhood. It's not the right fit. We're community-focused. We, most of us have young kids. And investment in this property in particular, I hope, would think about that and who is living there currently. So, thank you.
Any other public comment? If not, we'll proceed to questions and comments by the commission.
Madam Chair, may I, I just want to say that I really appreciate this process. I think the applicant, the homeowners, have been extremely respectful throughout this entire process. It's been professional. I think they've, they, so, so thank you, all of you. I think, no matter what the outcome is, this is how the process should go with a lot of public input and, and analysis. So I'm just very appreciative of this, this entire process and how everyone governs themselves.
Thank you. I agree with you as well. Questions and comments from the commission?
I have one that's, Ryan, and I don't know how much detail you want to get into, but design standards for this density, the PAD RS4, can you give us a, an overview of what might be expected of the design of these?
The same as what would be in any RS4 residential neighborhood. So it's a 25% masonry requirement. We have, yeah, so any design standard that pertains to a single-family resident would be applicable here. So it's, it's, it governs the width of garages, amount of masonry, amount of glazing on the front, so.
So the PAD does not accept them from any of the design standards?
It could. They did not request a waiver to that.
Okay.
So that, the waivers that they requested were to have several, 34 single-family residences on one lot and to have a separation distance instead of setbacks on there. So I think you'll see a couple of waiver requests on the, the other second one, rezoning, but, but not on this. So they, they could have requested that, they did not. So aside from being a little bit closer together, they should be designed similar to what is pretty common in North Liberty.
I know you have set a high bar, so we expect you to remember things like this. But can you talk again about the vintage estates and what kind of density they're?
Is that the one on Jones Boulevard?
Yeah, similar, similar density. So it's 30 units.
That's the one with the gate right on Jones Boulevard, the one we're talking about, right?
They, so similar, I think it's similar in style. I think they had two gates at both entrances here. They've mentioned the requirement to, to have it fenced, maybe because it's a co-op, I believe. But almost virtually the same type of development, a little bit larger of a lot. I think the setbacks are a little bit bigger, but almost virtually the same. And I think vintage estates is just about built out now, which, which I think tells us that there's a need for it, that type of housing, I think, with an aging population that is, is not stable so much. So having levels is difficult with mobility issues, and so building, building residences with kind of zero entries, those types of things, and not having to keep, upkeep the exterior. We're seeing a couple of those more recently since I've been here.
And actually, in that vein, Ryan, I want to remind the members that I am on the Johnson County Livable Community Policy Board, meaning the Johnson County Supervisors appointed me to serve on that board as well. And that is for keeping our community, living in the community and not going to institutions and that type of thing. So the 55-plus communities are actually one of their priorities in accessible housing and that kind of thing.
I will say, I mean, we didn't provide a recommendation, but I think the previous request was out of character with the area. I think the previous request had a four-story apartment building with, I didn't so much think the duplexes were out of character. It could be argued, but, but candidly, I thought a four-story apartment building was out of character with this area, and that was probably pushing more toward the eight, so you'd be at the upper limit of, of that density restriction. I just didn't feel that that type density fit in with the character of the area. I would agree.
I will make a comment, and I empathize with the, the objections. I live in Broadmoor Estates, and I have a farm field on one side of me, and I have Heritage Christian School behind me. Actually, they're an empty lot. And I know I would be disappointed. I will be disappointed when they eventually decide to build there. But at the same time, if they're building within city code and following all the ordinances that are set forth and working with our staff to get things done in the way that they're expected to do, I couldn't object. And I'll say too, the 55-plus community, I, my mom lives in one in Iowa City, another vintage project. There's one in Coralville, and I've spent a lot of time in those buildings. And I will say that they are quite family-oriented. I can understand why they wouldn't be perceived that way. But the people who live there, and my mom is one of the younger ones in that building, but everybody is thrilled. If grandkids show up, it's, I mean, it's, they love it. And so, and I would assume, and you know, one can't know for sure, but one would assume that vintage estates here in North Liberty and the Vintage Cooperative on Camp Cardinal, which is also at the entrance to a single-family, you know, that's actually a pretty mixed development, but you've got a wide array of densities up there at the top of Camp Cardinal. I get it, but I just don't, in my mind, you know, I don't, I don't quite see how they're not, you know, how we don't move forward with the, with the approval. So that's where I'm at.
I know to, to build on that, Barry, I agree. I thought the, the first proposal of the four-story, even though it didn't get to us, I didn't believe that met the character of the neighborhood. Whereas this, I'm, I'm definitely more seeing the integration. I personally live on the corner of 240th and Logan Court, so my deck is covered in construction dirt every day because that Solomon Landing is right across the street from me, literally. The dogs bark at the beeps that start at 7:00 a.m., so I get it. Please don't think that I don't. I live in the middle of that right now. But I also am really excited about the walkability and the integration and diversity. Having only been in North Liberty 10 years, I feel like I'm still a newbie here. I also know that I want to bring my aging parents to this community, and there is not a lot of places for them to live. And that's, again, on the board I'm on, looking for that accessible housing. And I, again, am looking at the vintage estates and integrate it into the community and not wanting to have to put them in some institution outside of town. So I'm looking at those three priorities and how this fits in the community better than that four-story. I just agree, I don't think that fit.
Yeah, I kind of think what is proposed to me, it looks nice. It looks, you know, in my opinion, you know, like quality buildings, like the idea of that. So in, on that end, I kind of feel like, I think it's a value add. I think it's a value add to the city, definitely. And I do, I kind of like the integration into the community, like you said, instead of, you know, on the, you know, outside of town. I know that my in-laws are looking at communities like this. I think the way it's proposed looks nice with the community, you know, the area. I like the proposal.
Jason, did you have comments?
I had a similar experience. I live off of Forever Green Road and the, the other, the Fox subdivision, Fox Valley. And I had a wonderful view when I moved in of the old RV park. I'm sure a lot of you have been in the community, remember that. And we had similar concerns when it was no longer working. There was questions, what was going to happen to the space? I know we've had everything from apartments to daycare, so other things. Eventually, it's now Keystone at Forever Green. It is a taller structure. It is different than our surrounding community. There was a lot of concern, concerns. I know a lot of you share about the concern of the future, concern of what's going on, but my view changed, and I didn't look forward to having it go in. But when it went in and it became part of it in time, communities do change, neighborhoods do change, sometimes for the better. North Liberty's done nothing but change, often for the better. I, I do sympathize with all the concerns here. The proposal before us today is not the three-story, four-story, I think, building that I have, but it's going to meet many of the design standards. I have learned to trust the process, the packet that we've been given. This is not a bad proposal. Is it the ideal that all of you wanted? Perhaps not, but it is, there are other options and other options for the developer that they could have pursued. This is the one that looks, it's not a bad fit. That's my take on it. I just want to be honest about how I'm leaning. But that's what I experienced myself, and that's, I want to share that.
Thank you. Any other questions for city staff or Cory O'Donnell?
Remind me, Ryan, you said the, thinking about the traffic counts. This is, how many trips per unit is that we're?
I think we're a little over like four and a half. So I think total was like 150, around there total, and this is throughout the day.
Right. I was actually a little surprised by that, speaking of experience at other 55-plus co-ops in particular. I realize that's the, kind of the data standard, right? What we use maybe in the real estate industry to kind of talk about these things. That, anecdotally, almost, like I said, it would kind of surprise me because it seemed maybe even a little bit high. And I'm not trying to discount anybody's thoughts about traffic because that's a legitimate concern, obviously. Bobbers and, you know, everything that goes on out the end of Scales Ben Road is already a lot, but this, from a data standpoint, from a number standpoint statistically, is not, you know, it's really not that big of an impact relative to what's already happening on Scales Ben Road, I'm sure. So thank you. I just want to make sure I understood, I heard that number correctly.
I think one of the things, especially when you were talking traffic compared to, if it was a different type of development versus compared to no development at all, this is definitely going to be a traffic increase, and I can't deny it, right? I think the issue I'm seeing is the issue of change. And I understand moving in with that beautiful view and the farm, I, like I said, I'm, I'm right in the middle of that transition as well, personally, off of 240th Street. And there is a little bit of like, I wanted the old quiet North Liberty to stay that way and look at that cornfield out of my kitchen window. But dealing with transition and change compared to what we have seen, I have seen a lot of Ryan's work on this, and it is consistent with the types of proposals that we'd want for this area, consistent with the comprehensive plan, because we look at the aggregate. And I understand you guys are looking at your neighborhood view, and that's where we all live, but looking at how many proposals we see and the type, I do think this is consistent with what we are encouraging and seeing the change of North Liberty go to. If we were seeing a unit like what's around, is it Liberty Pond, right, the, by Tin Roost that you, right? That wouldn't look right here.
Correct.
Right? But we're looking at expanding housing for our aging population as well. And so again, knowing that that's a priority for me as well, that I'm always watching that in every development, asking Ryan about accessibility and developers every time he doesn't bring it up first. It's, it's a change point, and it's, it's uncomfortable. And I want everyone to understand, we recognize that, and we respect your opinions, and thank you for sharing them. Would you like to comment as well?
I just had two comments. One about your comment about how it looks nice. I mean, respectfully, this is a residential neighborhood, so it does look nice. It's a nice retirement community. We live in a residential neighborhood, so I guess I would push back a little bit on saying, well, I'm for it because it looks nice. It doesn't fit our neighborhood. And then the other comment, and I worried a lot about this in our Good Neighbor meeting, it's been brought up several times that this is, this is very walkable, and no one's opposed to senior living. I'm, I'm getting close to 55 myself, all for it. If the community needs it, let's find the right place for it. It, it's not a walkable neighborhood. I mean, we're not walking into Jimmy John's and McDonald's, and it's a little bit farther, I think, than maybe you think. And that's why earlier I had hoped that maybe you had been to our neighborhood. I guess I just wanted to kind of state that. It's, it's, it's not really a walkable to anything neighborhood. So if that was the reason that you were thinking, I'm going to vote for it because we need walkable spaces for 55-plus, this is not it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments in the commission? If we're done discussing, I am open for any type of motion.
While I support this project, I will make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission accept listed findings and forward the zoning map amendment to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Heisler?
I'll second.
Second by Ahern. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bathke?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Genizer?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
All right, we move on to item number eight, public hearing on a zoning amendment map as well. Ryan will open it for staff presentation.
Okay, so this is currently a developed property on Rancho Way, west side of Rancho Way, approximately 280 feet south of West Cherry Street. Property is zone C2A. It's developed commercially. A to Z is currently located there, and you may recall that they're relocating a bit to the north with a new facility, so that, that left a gap. So we've been working with Jeff for quite some time. This is a scenario where the request really pertains to waivers, and that's why the PAD was requested. Jeff and I have gone back and forth about our design standards in the city. As you know, there's a high amount of masonry required, and that works really well for greenfield development. I think you see that type of development. I think you referenced the Brandon's project over there by Liberty Center Pond, which is the four-story 55-unit. Looks very nice. But we have an existing warehouse here, and so how do you retrofit that with design standards? And as talented as I am, haha, it's harder than you think to try and write down these standards, if this, then you can do this, but, you know, and so we, we thought the best approach would be a PAD. So property is currently zone C2A. There's two parcels here under common ownership, although they're different owning entities. They're, they're, they're the same Jeff, but the northern parcel has the wig and pen, just to give you some context. And Jeff showed me the pictures of what that looked like in the past. It's very interesting. It used to be a, I haven't been here long enough, but I was very surprised to see the transformation of what that used to be to what it currently is. And it's an excellent job of, of repurposing that commercial building to retail. And there's a big need here. You know, I think when you look at new greenfield development with the cost of land cost, the cost of vertical construction, right, and Barry probably knows this the best, that translates to what your rent is. But when you have existing buildings that have been owned and you're able to rehab, Jeff's able to offer that at a certain price point. And I think his center to the north is, is pretty full. And that's, you know, spending a lot of money on retail spaces is extremely risky. And we're not seeing a lot of, I'm not seeing any kind of spec commercial space because of that. The Hunter Company owns that vacant lot at the northeast corner of Rancho and Penn, and so you would think a, a prime spot, and it's just not getting developed, I think, because of that. So I think there's a big need here. I do think that, I have no doubt it would be much better than, than what it is. So just to kind of go through some of the, the things that I have, zone C2A, again, we're urban, high intensity, so it supports our highest intensity uses. Here's kind of the site plan, and it would be kind of the, the southern portion, southeast portion of the development. And those areas in kind of pink or red are kind of what the newer development would be. And so I've listed what those waivers are going to be. They're listed in the application, but it'd be a zero-foot setback along the common property line to the west, so that building along the west there would kind of be on a, on a property line. a property line. waiver from the 60% masonry, and I'll get into that part about it. waiver from the trash enclosure requirements, again, we require masonry, but this would be integrated into the building. And some of those things we've been thinking about is, is if those trash enclosures are hidden, you know, maybe they don't need to be full masonry, which, which I would support. And allow for a shared parking with properties to the north. And I'll let Jeff get into a little bit how he views what he envisions his tenants to be. We did have a Good Neighbor meeting on March 21st. We had a couple people attend, just had general questions, but we haven't received any objections to this request. I think people are supportive of, of this being, this property being rehabilitated. So the zoning C2A would achieve, would achieve consistency with the approval standards. I won't go through those one by one on this one. It does meet those approval standards, and the preliminary site plan, again, this is tied to the zoning. It does meet those and other code requirements. So staff does recommend you accept those two listed findings and forward the request to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Yeah, we'll follow the regular then, okay. And just flipping my pages, sorry, thank you, Greg. Do we have an applicant presentation for item number eight? Public hearing of the zoning map amendment.
No formal presentation. Oh, by the way, I'm Jeff Schweitzer. Ryan did a nice job. I'm just here for questions, and if you guys, any compliments, I'll take those as well.
Thank you, Jeff.
Those are all reserved for me.
Do we have any public comments on item number eight? If so, please feel free to come to the podium and introduce yourself. If none, I'll go ahead and open it to questions and comments from the commission. I just was connecting this to A to Z is moving up to the corner of 240th there, and so I wondered what they were going to do with the old A to Z, so this is a nice fill in the gap.
Yeah, and one thing I didn't mention is we are working to have that frontage road extend, so that will continue out. I think that'll be a good addition as well.
Thank you. That's, that's going to be one of my questions.
I always ask the parking question, but at this rezoning stage, that's not the issue yet.
Correct. I mean, they are asking, I mean, they do have ample parking, but what they're looking at is that northern parcel, so these two share. And I think Jeff's got some ideas about, you know, who his tenant spaces are. Some will need more parking, some won't need very much at all. So I think it's a good variety that'll just balance out anyway.
My years of having to park downtown Iowa City don't fade very fast, so. Any other questions or comments?
I know it's not the time for this, but if you do anything like you did the other side, I was very impressed when you did your refacing project on the other side of the property. It was very innovative.
Yeah, I wasn't here before it was Wigan Penn, or at least I don't remember what it was.
It's pretty impressive what it used to be to what it is now, what it used to be.
Kind of just blended in back there.
Cool, interesting.
Maybe I'll get Jeff to forward me some pictures that I can forward on.
I have some now and then pictures I can send.
That'd be very nice, very neat. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Break my streak of seconds. I move that the Planning Commission accept the two listed findings and forward the zoning map amendment to the City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Ahern?
I'll second.
I'll take Janiezer's second on that one. Can I have a roll call vote?
Janiezer?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Right. Moving on to item number nine, another amendment, zoning map amendment.
Okay, so these next four are city-initiated rezonings.
Nine, 10, 11, and 12, city-initiated.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So these are, obviously, we went through a year-long process of updating our comprehensive plan, and the next step is to go through and identify properties that are not consistent with that plan and rezone them to achieve consistency. So admittedly, when we first looked at this, that I think we're going to be presenting probably for about a year, I think, of requests, and so we were going through geographic areas. So this one was Section 12, south of Penn Street, so these were the four that encapsulated, I think, just to the north side of Zeller Street. So that is the reason for those. The first one is zone, and we, we sent certified letters and regular letters to the property owners, notify them of the public hearing this evening, as well as the City Council public hearing. So although they're city-initiated, we do feel there certainly that we need to notify property owners of this process. Currently, property is zoned RM21. We're at the northwest corner of Zeller and Front Street. See a lot of this RM21 throughout, but the, the developed residential density is, fits in a RM12. I know I mentioned that three to eight units can be considered low density, but there are, you can have medium density under special review, and they make sense in certain spots, and certainly front and Zeller, I think, is a higher transportation corridor, although through a residential neighborhood. So I think it fits, and this is what we call in the planning world, is kind of right sizing. So RM12, based on the acreage, is 4.8 units to the acre, and there's four residential units in here, so the 12 units, the RM12 would work perfectly. Again, the low-density residential kind of highlighted going up-down, and then to the, to the side there is the medium density, so it can be considered. High density shows in the red is something that is not compatible with, with the low intensity. So again, staff is recommending the RM12, and we meet it, we believe it meets the approval standards, and so we recommend you accept that listed finding and forward the request to City Council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just wanted to, I know that city-initiated rezonings are kind of few and far between, so I just wanted to give the commission a little bit of an update on what this is. This is changing the zoning designation, and that's it. That does, no property owner has any sort of vested right in a continuity of the zoning designation of their property. What they have often is the, the right to continue the use. So the use would continue for any of these properties. If they're already, if there is already substantial development or, or money put towards whatever the use is, then those will continue as a legal non-conforming use, and those can continue indefinitely. They can be maintained indefinitely, as long as they're not abandoned for a period of a year or destroyed. The, this will have no immediate effect on, on, any of these rezonings would have no immediate effect on any property owner, only if they wanted to redevelop, but they would, they would need to satisfy the, the new zoning designation if there is a redevelopment, or if they abandoned or the property was destroyed. I can answer more questions on that, but I want to just make sure that the, the commission understood at the outset.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
That applies for all four of these.
And because it is city-initiated, there is no applicant presentation. It was a staff presentation, but I will open it for any public comments or questions, if anyone has any. Please feel free to step to the podium and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Brad Hauser, and we own one of the properties in question.
I think, Brad, I recognized you, but we'll get to your item. We're going to do these individually, so you might want to wait for your, but you could certainly speak on this if you'd like.
There's nobody else here, so I figure what the heck.
Which address specifically were you interested in commenting on?
It's the four acres at 250 North Highway 965.
The third, not to be a stickler.
It's number, number 11.
We should, not to be a stickler, we should probably do these in order.
Do them in order, okay.
Well, I thought you were doing all of them, so that's why, you said all the numbers, so.
But that's where I wanted to note, so Brad, you specifically want to talk about item 11, I believe is what you were talking about.
Talking about all of them a little bit.
But if you'd like to, we're talking about item number nine right now, if you'd like to make any comments. Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the committee on item number nine? The northwest corner of North Front Street and West Zeller. Ryan, when you said right sizing, that's exactly what made sense to me, adjusting it in consistency with our.
Yeah, there's a, there's a fair amount of RM21s out there, so we've, we've been looking at those, but that's, that's the goal, and we don't expect, right? We wouldn't expect something higher density to be built in that parcel. It's, it's pretty small.
Any questions or comments, if, if, if any, or if none, will entertain a motion?
This parcel in particular, there's, that can make a difference. Did you ask for a motion?
Yeah, I'll entertain one, yeah.
I move that the Planning Commission accept the listed finding and forward the zoning map amendment to the City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Ahern?
I'll second.
Second by Heisler. Can I have a roll call, please?
Janiezer?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Moving on to item number 10, the zoning map amendment. This is located west of Cherry Street, 300 feet east of North Highway 965, Ranshaw.
And I won't go through all the approval standards, but this is associated with the Dental Office on Cherry Street. They're currently under construction for a building addition and a parking lot. So again, just, again, the, again, the industrial zoning does not conform to the U H I. Let me kind of go down there. Limited industrial, again, is not consistent with the urban high industrial, so neighborhood commercial, community commercial certainly would be. In this case, what we are asking is that it be zoned C1B, which is what same zoning as the Dental Office is, is well. So this would achieve consistency with the future land use map, as well as have the same zoning on the, on the adjacent lot under common ownership. And so, again, just don't want to go through all of this, but meets approval standards, and staff recommends that you forward this request to the Council with a recommendation for approval.
And you sent notice to landowners and received no objections?
Correct.
Thank you. If there is public comment on this specific item, the, I will open it up for that. Questions or comments from the commission? This one made even more sense to me.
Yeah.
From industrial to, yep.
Housekeeping.
Yep. All right, I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll move that the Planning Commission accept the listed finding and forward the zoning map amendment to the City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Heisler?
I'll second.
Second by Janiezer. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Heisler?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Janiezer?
Aye.
Item number 11.
Okay, so this is the third administrative zoning. Mr. Hauser is here as the landowner for this item. Again, this is industrially zoned property. Land use is urban high intensity. I would note that this, that these properties running from, including the last property, this property, and going down to Commercial Drive, even on the previous comprehensive plan, I think it was Commercial on the, the last land use plan. Again, we wanted to wait to see kind of what this would be. I think we had the expectation that they wouldn't recommend that this would be kind of an industrial area. There's not any, I think, these, this, the southern parcel, these two parcels are the only industrial properties on Ranshaw Way, with the exception of the area north of McDonald's. There's only, only three of them. But I think this is a primary, the primary corridor in the city of North Liberty. I think there's always been the expectation, at least from the city, that it should be commercially zoned. Again, we wanted to wait till the new comprehensive plan came through to, to move forward that and achieve consistency. So again, industrial zoning is not consistent with that urban high intensity. Staff did select the C3 zoning because it was the highest intensity commercial district that we have. We didn't want to give it a C1B zoning and limited C3 zoning from a commercial standpoint allows for that higher density, allows for a mix of residential, allows for a building height of 70 feet. So from a commercial standpoint, it's the highest intensity commercial that we have. Admittedly, you can't do everything that you could do with this property. There are certain industrial uses that would not become available. There is a warehouse building on the property. I'm not aware of any current active uses on the property, so it's hard to provide an opinion if there's a conforming use on the property or not. I can tell you that the current building is non-conforming, just based on design standards that we have in the city, just because industrial properties require a minimal amount of masonry. So it is non-conforming with respect to that. As Mr. Lentz mentioned, moving forward, they would certainly have rights if there was an active use on the property for continuance. So we do believe that the rezoning meets the approval standards in 165. We recommend that you accept that listed finding and forward the map amendment to the City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, I will open it to public comment now on item number 11. Thank you for, thank you for your patience.
So my name is Brad Hauser, and I want to thank Ryan for sending the letter, because the process in general is a little skewed across, across the state. You can do a graveyard ad, which most people don't even read the newspaper anymore, and they sure don't, you know, so you don't even see it. So I do thank him for doing that, because that was way better than many, many times I've had this type of process happen. My struggle probably more with the property and, and not necessarily is the change in zoning. It's probably more that we've owned this property for 30 years. We vested to buy the property with the intent that it could have what it can have on it, meaning that it should be able to be able to have the uses that we purchased it for. So if it's an industrial zone, we should be able to keep it in industrial zone. If we sell it to somebody else, then they, you can rezone it, you can do whatever, but we bought it with that intent. And, and so now we have some restrictions that will be different than they were before. Not saying we won't agree upon those, I'm just saying that we now have some change that I'm not sure is a fair, equitable type situation. There are a lot more design standards. The city has historically always felt this was a problem there without even a concept. So they didn't have a concept of what we would build there, so that's always kind of had a, a objective to it. Is that a fair statement, Ryan? You're shaking your head, so.
I was listening, but yeah.
So.
We've had a lot of, it's fair to say we've had a lot of conversations.
Yeah, yeah. So again, I think the biggest thing that I'm objecting to is, again, when the land use plan comes out, it just goes out as a caveat, and if you don't get the newspaper specifically for it, you don't even know there's a meeting on it. So I don't think that's a very fair thing for anybody that owns land. They should get an automatic notice like Ryan did. I give him credit for that a lot. But I think my biggest struggle is that we're going to have change, and so instead of doing something, if you guys want us to change it, you come to us with something and say, hey, we would like to have, you know, commercial built there. So we're going to give you added incentive, whether that's TIF, whether that is some other incentives to it, versus just, we're going to change your land use, and now you have a change of use of what you bought it for. It's like you and your home. You wouldn't like me to come into your home and change the land use and say you can't have it anymore the way you have it. You can have it for that time period, but you want to change anything on it, you've got to change it. You got to add more brick, you got to add more, more design standards. I just don't think that's a fair process. I get you want to change the city and make things, like I said, we've owned this property for over 30 years. I've sold a lot of property in this town, I've owned a lot of property in town, and I don't think it's a fair process that way to take it from somebody. That's my, that's my soapbox.
Any questions or comments from the commission? I had a question for Brad. What's on that site right now?
We used the metal building for our shop. We just have it for our shop. We always had the intent to build something that just happened. As Ryan said, it's tough to make commercial work today, so, you know, that's, that's a big problem. And I think it's a problem going forward with the land to be able to get something on it. And so if there aren't going to be, again, that's why I'm saying, I think there should be more, if you guys want me to change it, besides just saying, we're changing the map and giving it to you, and here it is. I think you ought to do something to make an incentive. Iowa City does it with downtown, they do with other areas they want to change, they bring incentives, whether that's TIF or some, there's a million ways you can incentivize stuff. You guys know them better than I do, so what cities can do? And I think that's a much fairer approach than.
And I think that's a much fairer approach than coming in to tell somebody, we're taking away what you have and making it in something different. And now we have to conform to this standard versus you bought it for this standard.
I see this both ways. And I have to, I mean, I've, my libertarian bent is, you know, I, I hear what you're saying. That said, and I, and I don't remember exactly all the details of the input process of the comprehensive plan, but it seemed like that was a pretty widely advertised and, you know, I was involved in it. And I know there were a lot of, there were a lot of people that were involved in it. And I know that it was very deliberate. And that corridor, like I said, I empathize with your situation. Whether or not there's an industrial use for that site in the future from a development standpoint, that as somebody in the real estate business as well, I, I just don't, I don't see that as highest and best use personally or professionally for that matter. So in that vein, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm apt to agree with the process here. Like I said, I do, I do see it both ways. I just think in the interest of, you know, comprehensive plan and the, the vision that I think is pretty collective for what's going to happen, you know, in North Liberty and what we, you know, hope to see along 965, that that's the, you know, the, the correct move. And I give you credit for going with the, you know, the most, you know, the best density possible from a development standpoint for that site. And that's where I'm at. Like I said, I empathize with the situation, I just.
I think industrial is a very loose term. So I think, you know, you're not going to have some Centro type project there. So I think you can do a lot of different things in an industrial zone that you can't necessarily do in a, in a commercial zone and vice versa. So again, the landowner should have the real site to do and say, this is what we want to do versus, versus it being changed over to something else that's not really what you purchased it for. Whether it's, you know, and again, I've owned a lot of, any of you have been in town.
Is this where, there's sometimes a fireworks tent? Would that, would this zoning change that ability?
The state allows it in commercial as well.
I want to also make sure I was still picturing the right place in my head as well. So back to how you started on the, the legal rezoning, any current use can be maintained?
Right, so no property owner has a vested right in the continuation of a particular zoning classification. The only vested right the property owner may acquire is the right to complete the development of his or her property in accordance with their plans and blah, 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 blah. Our ordinance allows for legal non-conforming use. So if you've got it in place, you can do that forever. If you want to, but Mr. Hauser, I think you're pretty familiar with if you change the process, if you want to expand your driveway in the old part of town, that's, that's got to be concrete, right? Because our design standards have changed if you want to, so that would have to follow the new, whatever the applicable design standards are at that time. So we're expanding, changing, abandoning or, or destruction. And that's, and that's set by state code, that's pretty uniform. And our, our ordinance adopts those standards.
Okay, thank you.
Anything I can say? But again, we can't add, I mean, the building that's there is probably not the best I assume, we all know that. But we can't even add on to it other than like 30 to 10% of absolute most, we can change it, change that site point. So if I wanted to add on to it, I can't really do much with it anymore. And then I have to break it to all the other stuff. Is that not correct?
Correct.
So again, the breaking and all that, I don't believe is a requirement for the industrial zone, which has always been one for the city that they need to live. Again, there's a lot of ways to make a building look very nice. I'm not, I'm not one that says that it's all this or all that, but that's another thing that's kind of being imposed that's not. So it's a huge cost change. And again, I do appreciate Ryan saying we're looking to try and go to a higher zoning, but as he even said in the meeting, it's really hard to make numbers work on any commercial projects today.
Yeah. I'm, I'm struggling with, this is a meeting where we had a lot of people discussing change and North Liberty is growing. We cannot deny that. 30 years ago, you were probably on the north end of town with that, weren't you?
Not quite.
Close, right? I know there's hundreds of houses north of me now that weren't there even 10 years ago, but, and personally having that right along the artery, I understand the zoning change.
And I, I don't want to make it sound like approved this because I'm saying this, but I mean, Brad and I have talked, we, we met several months ago. We, we are constantly looking at the commercial zone and, and the way we reorganized the code, it lends itself to making uses. And I, you know, one that sticks out in my head is kind of like a micro manufacturing or hobby manufacturing or something in commercial. So we are looking at market conditions and understanding that spec retail commercial is not doing well, what is doing well? And, and can that fit into a commercial district with certain design standards? That was the, the last conversation we had. And we're open, we'll continue to be open to those conversations.
Thank you. And thank you for your input.
Do we not have a mason requirement for?
So it's 25% on the front elevation, not on the sides and rear. So Mr. Hauser is correct. If you wanted to do an addition on, on an end or something like that, it'd have to be a, it'd have to be a 60% masonry on that elevation. Or I suppose they could come in and ask for a P A D to, like Jeff did and, and, you know.
In the existing though, the industrial.
No, we wouldn't come back retroactively and say if that's.
Right, but I'm saying though, if you were to, let's say a new project under the current zoning, industrial, there is a masonry requirement there, correct?
25% on the front.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So I look to the commissioners for next steps? If you'd like to entertain a motion? Is it 121?
I think so. It's found it.
Oh, of a sudden they are kicked off.
Yeah, it did. It's a good.
Usually it gets hotter when I talk.
Me too.
Does anyone want additional information or would they like to make a motion? I don't even know, can I?
Yes, you may.
I will move that the planning commission accept the listed finding and forward the zoning map amendment to the city council with a recommendation for approval. So motion by Bathke? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Janiezer. I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Janiezer?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye reluctantly, but I see your point, but aye.
We'll move on to item number 12, again, a zoning map amendment. This is the, the fourth one requested by the city.
It's a very similar request, so it's just the existing BCI lumber, so very similar situation. So we'll go through the whole presentation, but again, we do recommend you accept the listed finding and forward the request to the city council with recommendation for approval. And again, certified regular notices were sent to the property owners.
Owner was notified? And it's not Brad?
It's not Brad.
Okay, just checking.
It's true.
And this is, does get to stay a lumberyard forever, right?
I will open it to if there are any additional public comments, otherwise questions and comments by the commission. From my perspective, consistency in what we just moved.
Hundred percent.
All reluctance and then, or respect for matters discussed, continue to this parcel from my perspective.
I agree. Yeah, and I will say too, again, the, the, the one consistent thing that happened in the, the information sessions for the comprehensive plan was the discussion of Ranshaw and what is happening in this area. And I mean, we're not elected representatives, but I hear people talk about that kind of thing and it's top of mind for the entire town and kind of overwhelmingly the desire is to see something along the lines of what's in the comprehensive plan happen eventually, you know, when the time is right, you know, whatever that might be. Maybe it's not even commercial, who knows? I, I don't, but that's where I'm at with these.
Given my feeling of consistency with the previous item, I'm going to move that the planning commission accept the listed findings and move forward the zoning map amendment to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Bathke, second by Ahern. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Bathke?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Janiezer?
Aye.
Heisler?
Aye.
Okay, 13, this looks like another request by the city. Just a public hearing on, or, I'm sorry?
We're on a roll here.
Yeah.
This is just again, to reiterate the comprehensive plan, I've been building approval standards, you've noticed them in zoning, but they also should be in site plan standards as well. One thing we'd like to reiterate is consistency with our comprehensive plan. It's something we should look at, the long range map when we consider site plans. The other thing that came up was we were reviewing a site plan and requiring easements for emergency vehicles to access developments. It's not in the code as a requirement, so we wanted to add it. I think the Solomons Landing, single family apartments there. And again, it's just a site plan that we're reviewing. So fire department asked, and police, if people are parking on that private street or if there's an emergency, how do we have the legal right to get back there? And so that just reiterates that, that, that can be required through this process. So we do recommend, it's a, it's a very short ordinance, but we recommend you, you accept the listed finding and forward this request to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Seems very straightforward to me. No public input received, it wasn't required. I assume I should open it to public comment if there is any though.
Yes.
There is any public comment? If no public comment, then we'll send it to the commissioners for any questions, comments, or if straightforward, I'm open to a motion.
Straightforward as far as I can see, yeah.
Yeah.
Please do not impede the fire department.
Yeah.
If the case, I can move that the planning commission accept the listed finding and forward the ordinance amendment to city council with a recommendation for approval.
Motion by Heisler?
Second.
Second by Ahern, may I have a roll call vote?
Heisler?
Aye.
Ahern?
Aye.
Bathke?
Aye.
Janiezer?
Aye.
Uh, I then come to approval of the previous minutes. So everyone had a chance to review them and would anyone motion for approval of those?
Would love to move to approve the previous minutes.
Motion by Ahern?
Second.
Second by Janiezer, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Old and new business.
Just under old, I've, I've talked to a few people now, a new comprehensive plan is out there, but, but I've been hearing a lot of positive feedback. Again, it was just really tough to, and again, I'll point to the Fox Run Farm, it just, previously it was residential and it didn't give a lot of guidance with respect to density. And so we're really getting into where is density appropriate? So been hearing some good feedback, so we're excited about that. It was a, a good process. New business, assuming the application comes in, but we have an Aldi looking to build in our community, so I'm expecting a site plan at the beginning of the month, so it'd be considered it in June, so it'd be across from the McDonald's, Pasha Way. So that's very exciting. So we'll see, we'll see if that one comes in. But it seems like we've been getting pretty close to something coming in.
Nice. I wanted to comment on our regular meeting for the month was canceled due to the emergency or the bad weather prediction. And I know that one date, it did not turn out for the, to have the bad weather, but considering the week before, you know, the institution I worked for lost a facility in the tornado storm, I wanted to thank you for being proactive and being considerate about the weather. I know sometimes people are like, well, we didn't have any.
Yeah.
That's the good scenario, so.
Tracy and I agreed, it was like, let's just err on the side of caution here. And this does not be a great building to.
Where in this building would we go?
Well, that's the other side of it. As a risk manager, I wasn't going to be here.
I just, I don't, I'm not confident in this location that we have a, a spot that we could all be safe.
Yeah. So I wanted to at least comment and acknowledge that. I get a lot of Monday morning quarterbacks in my business that say, well, nothing happened. Well, guess what? We can make up a meeting, so.
Goodness.
The maxim holds true. You canceled and nothing happened and if we'd have had it, we would all had to climb in the bathroom together or something.
Well, it does bring up, what's at the new building? What's in the new building? Does it have a basement or?
Extra meetings.
They got bunker for Ryan.
He's on the second floor, no, I've got the bunker.
We're next to Reds, I know what the basement looks like over there.
We have an IT closet that's built pretty sturdy, so.
It's, it's always one of those things you, you have to think about and I appreciate it when other businesses do acknowledge it, so. If there aren't any other comments or questions from the commission, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion by Heisler?
I'll second.
Second by Ahern, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Getting adjourned.